Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order the Planning Commission meeting for March 8, 2010. If I might ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if Commissioner Reynolds could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, thank you very much. Will the Recording Secretary please call the role?
Commissioner Adam.
President.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Lunn.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Chair Grumney.
Here.
Now is the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. And I don't think we have any cards for public comments. Mr. Towne, are there any contingency announcements or continuances that you'd like to make at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are two items that I would like to bring to the Commission's attention. Both were addressed in supplemental packets which were issued earlier today. The first supplemental packet includes two comment letters on Case 6B, which I will address in a moment. Both of those parties were notified, just for the Commission's information about that particular case, and responded with regard to those. But in addition, in supplemental packet two, I'd like to note for the record that earlier today, staff identified that certain parcels within the 500-foot radius for the Las Robles Golf Course event area were not adequately notified, and therefore, this case must be continued. And what staff would recommend is that it be continued on a date certain basis to the next regular Planning Commission meeting, which is March 22. Notices have been mailed out today to meet the 14-day deadline for that notification. And with that, I would again recommend that the Commission, in a moment, take an action to continue that item, Case 6B, to March 22. Also, I would like to note that in the second supplemental packet, there were minor revisions to the minutes from your last meeting on January 25. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Would we need to make a motion on the minutes at this time, or when we do go to adopt the minutes?
When you go to adopt the minutes.
Okay. Do we have a motion for a continuance of Case 6B? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I move that we continue Item 6B, which is the Las Robles Golf Course event area, to our regularly scheduled meeting of March 22, 2010.
Okay, would you please vote? Okay, will the Secretary-
Motion passed, 5-0.
Will the Secretary please call Case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding Case SUP 2008-70457. Applicant: Cigars &amp; Wines, Inc. Request: To allow consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine tasting only. Location: 2805 Agura Road.
Thank you very much. The staff report this evening is given by Mr. Joey Lynn, Assistant Planner.
Good evening, Chair, Grumney, and member of the Planning Commission. For your first case is a application, a special use permanent application for cigars and wines, by Cigar &amp; Wines Incorporated, at 2805 Agura Road. The proposal is to allow beer and wine tasting at existing cigar and liquor store. If I may direct your attention to the monitor. The project location is at 2805 Agura Road. It's on the corner of Village Glen Avenue and Agura Road, located in the center building, the freestanding building of an existing plaza. Again, this is a freestanding building located in an existing shopping center. It's part of an expansion for an adjacent cigar shop. And the current space is previously a coffee shop. This is the front view. The existing cigar shop is to the left side of the elevation. It'll be a part of the... Coffee shop will be part of the expansion from the NK Cigars and be combined as Cigar &amp; Wine, Inc. This is the site in the rear view of the future expansion. All the expansion will be inside the existing space. This is a view of the previous interior of the coffee shop. The existing chairs that you see in the middle of the monitor will be converted into couches and tables, while the counter on the right-hand side, which used to serve coffee, would remain at the same location, it'd be converted into the wine tasting counter. This is the view of the conversion. Previously, a coffee counter, it'll be changed to a wine tasting counter. This is the existing cigar shop next door. It'll be part of the expansion. This requires a Planning Commission review because the proposed application is within 400 feet of residential property. In this case, the closest residential property is 165 feet away from the business. The counter, the tasting counter, consists of a 17-feet-by-14-feet counter, and it'll be used for wine tasting prior to the purchase of the retail liquor, wine and beer that'll be on sale on the retail store. There's no increase of parking requirement, as this is incidental to the primary retail operation. The proposed hours is the current hours, which is 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and which is the operating hours of the retail store now. We have, on the staff report, the staff has included conditions that are there from Police Department, that there has to be adequate supervision of wine tasting. There's also limited pours. In this case, they're limited of three pours at one ounce per pour to same person per day. And it's restricted to the counter tasting area only. Police Department has reviewed and approved this subject to the conditions. Staff recommends approval of SUP 2008-70457, based on the findings subject to conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Staffs available for questions.
Are there questions of staff? Commissioner Adam.
Oh, thank you. Hi, Mr. Lunn. Just a quick question. The applicant has a license to sell beer and wine, obviously. Do they sell hard liquor as well, or just beer and wine?
Current store does sell hard liquor, on top of beer and wine. It's approved, it was approved by City Council.
All right. But the tasting's strictly beer and wine, though, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thanks.
Okay, now we're going to go to our speaker cards. Our first speaker is our applicant, Narendra Kumar. Mr. Kumar, if you can come to the podium, state your name and city of residency, and you'll have 15 minutes.
And I have this business for the last three years, which I started as a cigar shop. I used to have a coffee shop next door, which I'm planning to expand my cigar shop into coffee shop. And I just got my License 21, where I sell hard liquor, beer and wine. And I'm planning to get this wine and tasting license, which is really kind of necessity for my business, so people can taste before they decide to buy any wine or beer. So, as, it's limited to one ounce, as you can, you can see in the report, it's limited to three tastings per day, per person, which is only one ounce each pouring. And we do have other businesses around, like Three Six, Badukas, and Suk. One more place, they already provide, I mean, serve alcohol. And my operation is little different from those businesses. Our business hours, my business hours are only 11 to 9, and the kind of clientele that I have, so, so I can assure you that there won't be any trouble or nuisance or anything for the community. So, I would really appreciate if I get this application approved today, and that's what I have to say.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lunn?
Good evening, sir. Thank you for coming down. Could you explain the process of how you're going to monitor the three drinks, the three pours per person?
Because I'm the only one who works over there, and I will be doing, running all this operation by myself, so I make sure that I stick to all these conditions.
And I appreciate that, and I know that you will, but just for our sake, if you had 10 people that were tasting, what is the process that you're going to use to determine is number three on drink number two, is number eight on drink number three? How will you physically do that? If you can give us an explanation of that, that'd be very helpful for us.
I go by each person's name, like this person. I know all of my customers, I think, they've been there for, coming to my store for the last three years. I know them by name, so we keep track by each person's name, that how many they have tasted before and what is left, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do people smoke cigars in the cigar store?
Yes, they do.
And will they be able to go into the wine tasting area?
No, it's separate from the wine tasting.
It'll be completely separate, so.
Smoking will be limited to the, yes, cigar shop.
And so where you sell cigars, you also sell liquor?
Yes.
Correct? So if anybody walking in the liquor store has to be made aware that they are smoking within that establishment?
Yes, actually, there will be a partition between wine tasting and the cigar, there's also requirement from the ABC. We have to put permanent fencing that separates the wine tasting and the cigar shop.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Adam?
Yes, thanks. Hi, Mr. Kumar.
Hi.
Because of the, well, I don't know if this is the correct characterization, maybe a little more casual nature of, you know, purchasing wine and having a little sip to taste it. Do you anticipate any problems with age enforcement?
We, I cannot allow anyone under 21, and we will have a sign right by the fence that no one under 21 is allowed in the tasting area.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Kumar.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kumar.
Thank you, very much.
Okay, I have some additional speaker cards. The next speaker will be Bob Koff, followed by Orin Karp. Mr. Koff, if you could come to the podium, state your name, city of residency, and you will have four minutes.
Okay, good evening. My name is Bob Koff. I live in Oak Park, and I am a regular customer of NK Cigars, as are many of the folks that are here this evening. We support Mr. Kumar and his efforts to be, to contribute to the city and to the community. He's a very responsible individual. We found him to be very helpful and also very law-abiding. He's very particular about, you know, there are times, sometimes kids will come in and, you know, they want to buy cigarettes, and he's very careful about asking for ID. I mean, we've seen that happen. So he's very conscientious about all of those rules and guidelines. And, you know, it's a gathering place. There's actually a lot of business that gets done in the, in that shop, where many of us, most of us have met and become friends, and actually, business transactions take place, the people in real estate and people in insurance and law and other areas. So, it's a, it's a very friendly kind of community and very conducive to, you know, I think that helps the city as far as the, you know, the taxes and the funding. I'm not, I don't know much about that, but I would imagine that as Mr. Kumar does more business, it ultimately contributes to the city's revenue. So, we're very much in favor of having, although it's, you know, it's limited, but we're very much in favor of having the opportunity to have a wine tasting now and then, and along with some of the cigar tastings that go along with it. So, thank you very much.
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Koff. Now it's Orin Karp, followed by Thomas, I'm going to help play, Durskin. If you could say your name, city of residency-
Good evening. My name is Orin Karp. I'm a resident of Oak Park. The reason I'm here is because, in addition to support Kumar, I like the idea of the tasting, because I don't know much about wine, and I can't tell you how many times I've gone into the supermarket and looked at various wines and bought a bottle because the label looked nice, and I got it home, and it really wasn't very good. And I, I see it as a benefit to me personally, and anyone that is not familiar with various wines, to be able to taste it first before you invest in a bottle, whether it be $10 or $50. It gives you the opportunity to taste it first, so you know what you're getting, and so you're assured that you'll have it. And he's got a nice selection of wines that, quite frankly, I've never seen before, so it'll allow me to be a more informed consumer, and I'll benefit from that. So I'm in full support of it.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Durskin. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Karp. And now it's Thomas Durskin, followed by Masood Shaffa.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Durskin.
And the city of residency?
City of residency is Ventura, California.
Thank you.
I would just like to say very briefly that I've been a customer for several years, and I'd like to share my observations at all times. I have patronized Mr. Kumar's establishment. I've always been made very clear what rules are. I find Mr. Kumar's been extremely organized, and I really applaud his entrepreneurship. I don't think I could do what he's doing, and I think in a downturn in the economy for a lot of people, this is a, the liquor license in question would be actually an opportunity to enhance not only Mr. Kumar's entrepreneurship, but also the community. I think this would be an asset to the community, and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Is there any questions of the speaker? Thank you. Our next speaker, Masood Shaffa, followed by Shane Haroun.
Good evening, folks. My name is Masood Shaffa. I'm a resident of Westlake Village, California. I like to go to a place where I can relax and enjoy a cigar wine tasting, and it's very close to my home, it's less than a mile. And I found out Mr. Kumar is very helpful. I'm a new cigar smoker and don't know much about wine, so that would be a very good place that me and my wife can go and relax and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions of the speaker? Thank you very much. Shane Haroun. And then our last speaker will be Jonathan Moch.
Good evening. My name is Zane Haroun, and I'm a resident of Simi Valley. I'm in support of NK Cigars, and of course, the lounge. To be honest with you, it's the only way I can get my wife to go with me. So that's why I'm, I want him to open the lounge, so my wife would go with me. And that's it.
Is there any questions of the speaker?
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Lunn?
I just got to ask, where's your wife tonight?
She's actually not well. She's been sick all weekend, and I, I came down. I just dropped off some Theraflu, and I said, "I'll be back, and I'll pick up some soup from Brent's." So I was able to get away, because I promised her some soup.
Thank you, sir.
You even get one more question. Commissioner Reynolds?
Is that to get your wife to go to smoke cigars with you?
No, the wine. Because I, I like my wi, I, she doesn't really smoke cigars, she doesn't, and so I guess that's the way for us to go, and I'll be happy that I'll be there, and she'll be there with me, so I don't feel that bad.
Good. Oh, good. Keep the family together.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Haroun. Our final speaker, Jonathan Moch. How'd I do?
Hi, I am a resident of Westlake Village, and I also live about a mile, mile and a half from NK Cigars.
Could you also state your name? I'm sorry, Senator, it's not just my butchered ver-
Jonathan Moch.
Thank you.
Okay. And I've been a patron of Kumar's for probably close to two years. I watched him, you know, work very hard trying to keep his coffee shop going, and he really wanted that business to make it, and it didn't, and he made a very bold move to convert the whole thing to a cigar lounge, which has been successful, but the liquor license is another part of that. One of the things you addressed was, you know, the age. I think that it's a majority of business people that go into NK Cigars. It's all throughout the day, so it's not a clientele that is looking to get drunk, obviously. I would say the meeting age is going to be around 40 or so, and those are people who are just looking to relax, have a cigar, and sip a wine, you know, to relax, watch TV. And on average, I would say that we're there probably three or four hours. So, it's not a place that I think people are looking to go and, and get drunk and leave and, you know, that kind of stuff. So, it's just a place to relax. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the speaker? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, I'd like to state for the record that we have three written statement cards, all in favor of the proposal. And so now we'll go back to staff for any comments.
No, ma'am.
Any additional questions? If not, we'll close the public, the, oh, excuse me, I need to go back to the applicant. Do, and you have an opportunity to make any final comments?
No.
Okay. If not, now we'll close the public meeting, and we'll go for commission comments and/or motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Even though I'm a prior smoker, I have to say that. I do move approval of the SUP 2008-70457, and I am also one of those that really doesn't know wine from wine. Our city attorney tried to help me at one time, some of our trips. Our prior assistant city attorney tried to help. I think all of the commissioners, but I think it's a great thing to do, as far as letting people taste, and with your knowledge too. So with that, I move to approve your application.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Lunn?
Thank you. Mr. Kumar, you run a, you're an outstanding business person, and I wanted to, you run a good business, and I want to concur with one of the speakers here, that in, in light of this economic downturn, it's very bold. I can see you have your family with you, your young family with you, and, and we're looking in this city to have business owners that are responsible like you, and I'm happy to support Commissioner Reynolds' motion on this matter, as well as trying to save the marriage of the previous speaker here.
Any additional comments?
I would, I'm going to gladly support the motion, but I can tell, Mr. Kumar, you are and will be a responsible business owner, and it's very good to have you in the community, and it's not often that a business person like yourself brings such a fine array of support from the community. It's really refreshing to hear. Thank you all for coming and speaking for Mr. Kumar.
Commissioner Reynolds, do you have any final comments? If not, could we vote?
Motion passed, 5-0.
Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal within the Community Development Department within 10 days. I think now we need to go to our minutes, to approve our previous minutes. Do we want to go to something else? We just do it. Commissioner Reynolds?
I move, I move approval of the minutes of January 25, 2010, with the corrections submitted in the supplemental packet two.
Could we vote?
Motion passed, 5-0.
Okay. Okay, CDD, reports and referrals?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of items I wanted to bring to the Commission's attention. On page 43 of your packet this evening is the Commission's tentative hearing agenda. And as you can see, for March 22, in addition to the Los Robles Greens event area, which you previously continued to that date, we have the visitor center at McCray Ranch proposed for your consideration that evening, as well as the Rancho Potrero specific plan and related items. In addition, on your dies this evening, staff distributed the environmental impact report for the Los Robles Hospital and Medical Center seismic retrofit and expansion project. The public review period for that project is March 5 to April 9. And as I believe you're already aware, that includes a proposed new wing, a fourth-floor addition to the three-story wing, which was completed in 2008, and a new parking structure. So that is, just going to give the Commission a little bit more reading material in preparation for that hearing, which will be coming up later this year. Thank you.
Are there any AB 1234 reports? Any commission comments? I would just like to recognize Commissioner Fisher and the fine job he's doing with the county of Ventura, and draw people's attention to the letter to the editor that he wrote over the weekend, making people aware that there still is the flu vaccinations that you can get in the various different, in fact, Commissioner Fisher, can you just explain where people can go to be able to get the flu vaccination?
Sure. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, we aren't out of the woods yet. People can still get their H1N1 vaccine from any of our four public health clinics, as well as our Ventura County Medical Center operates quite a few satellite clinics around the county. So go to the county website, and we've got all the information there.
I had all of my children and my husband vaccinated. It was very simple, right through the nose. It was very quick and painless. So I encourage everyone to get it done. We'll now adjourn the meeting to 6:30 p.m. on March 22, 2010.